And today's invocation will be given by Dr. Esther Matthews, a call to character ministries. If you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag. Everyone, please silence your cell phones. Thank you. You may come forward, Dr. Matthews.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you today as we come in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you for this gathering, this meeting. I believe, God, that you have placed your Spirit upon your leaders, your world leaders here today in this room, and all who are represented as world leaders. Father, I believe that you have given them skillful and godly wisdom, that they would know your will, and that they would be guided with your will. Father, we thank you that their hearts and ears are attentive to your godly counsel. Lead them, Lord Jesus, to be women and men of integrity, Lord God, and that they would be pleasing in your sight and live a peaceable and godly life. Father, we thank you today that this meeting will not be any type of ascension, or dissension, or argumentative. I pray peace to be still. Peace in the name of Jesus. And we thank you, Lord God. We thank you, Lord, that you are going to remind your leaders daily to be accountable to the Almighty God, for the way they handle themselves, the way they walk, talk, listen, will influence not only the present day, but the future of the world. Father, we pray that you will always abide with them and they abide with you, and will always hear your voice. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and amen.
Amen, amen. Please join us in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Matthews, thank you so very much. I would also like to say that Dr. Matthews is a city retiree of many years. Thank you so very much. At this time, I will be reading a proclamation. I'm gonna do the roll call first.
I was correct.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dureo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I will read a proclamation for the Top Ladies of Distinction, Beaumont Chapter. And this month is Ladies Month, so we will be celebrating ladies throughout the rest of the month. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction, Inc., has been in our area for 56 years enriching the lives of the community. Whereas on May 5th, 1967, the Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction, Inc., became a illustrious chapter with organizer Lady Audrey V. Cammo and five other local charter members, under the umbrella of a nonprofit educational humanitarian organization, Top Ladies of Distinction, Inc., which began with eight distinguished dedicated visionary founders. Whereas the Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction, also known as TLOD, represent a cross-section of 46 local resourceful women, under the presidential leader of Lady Verley Nobles. They work in the interest and common desires to service youth and adults. And whereas the Beaumont Top Ladies of Distinction, Inc., focus and objectives are to enhance and enrich the lives of youth and adults through the implementation of community-based programs, thus, and projects to include Top Teens of America, which there are currently 77 active local teens, improving the status of women, service to senior citizens, community beautification, and community partnerships. Local to nationwide support of the National Council of Negro Women, NCNW, and the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, United Negro College Fund, UNCF, Sika Cell Disease Association of America, Keep America Beautiful, Black Women Agenda, St. Jude Research Children's Hospital, Health Choices, the National Foundation of March of Dimes, the American Heart Association, the Alzheimer's Walk, Literacy, and the avoiding of local scholarships to top teens. Moreover, TLOD has included in its program a cooperative peer education facet and membership with Top Teens of America. Whereas on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, we recognize and honor the Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction, Inc., as shapers of change during the month of March, Women's History Month, for all of their accomplishments and contributions to the city of Beaumont. Now therefore, I, Mayor Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby recognize Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction, and thank them for all of the wonderful work they do in our community. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, has set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed, signed this day, March 21st, 2023. And accepting this award is Mrs. Eloise Alex. And Ms. Alex, if you'll come forward and bring anyone you'd like, and please come around, shake everyone's hand, and accept your proclamation. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
If y'all start there and come around, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, Devon.
Let me see what I need to say. Let me say this, huh?
Congratulations.
That's candy.
Congratulations, Devo. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
How you doing? Congratulations. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. I am Lady Eloise Graham Alex, and I am the first Vice President of the Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction. We are so delighted that you have chosen to recognize us for our public service in the city. We would like to thank you for this honor and to show our appreciation. You've already met our members here. We also have one of our Lords in the back. Lord Avery, please raise your hand. He's one of our big supporters there. They've joined me here as we accept this prestigious award. Now, for those of you that are not familiar, Mayor Robin has already read some information about our organization, but I just have a few more facts that I would like to share with you. Our national organization is divided into six geographic areas throughout the United States. The Beaumont Chapter is located in Area 1. That is the largest area. It includes Arkansas, Louisiana, Oklahoma, New Mexico, and Texas. The major purpose of the Top Ladies Organization is to mentor the youth group, you've heard that, known as Top Teens of America. And there are over 215 teen chapters in the six geographic areas, and over 5,000 middle and high school students in these chapters. And of course, we can boast, because you just heard, we have 77 members in our chapter, including two area officers. Twenty-eight teens and seventeen ladies will attend an area conference at the Anatole Hotel in Dallas, Texas this weekend. Our teens will be among 400 teens in attendance. And we have Teen Mariah Lottie of the Beaumont Chapter proudly serving as the national president of the entire organization. She will preside over the national convention in Los Angeles, California, July 2023. The Beaumont Chapter is proud to announce that yes, we have two national officers from our chapter. We are equally proud of the projects and activities that have been sponsored by this chapter. We invite each of you to visit the MLK Memorial Park, where you will see the memorial bench and table that was donated to the park by the Beaumont Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction. It was made possible from a $3,000 grant from Port Arthur LNG Environmental Champion Grant Initiative. We are truly Beaumont proud for the dedicated ladies that volunteer their time and resources to make this organization what it is. Lady Verley Nobles is the chapter president, and Lady Dr. Alicia Dos is the top teen advisor. And we thank you again for this recognition.
Ms. Alex, thank you so very much. I learned a little more with what you just stated, more than I even thought. So to all of the ladies, thank you so very much for what you do, and you are truly, truly spreading the word of Beaumont abroad. And so, Councilmember Edwin Samuel would like to say something.
Yes, I'd just like to say, thank you to what you do. I recall 1967, I became a top teen in Beaumont. And that's where I learned about parliamentary procedure, and the first trip that I was able to take outside of Beaumont was with the Top Teens going to a convention in Houston. So, thank you.
So there you have it. When he said 1967, Attorney Reed did like, what? I was only seven. But again, thank you so very much for what you do, and to the gentleman in the back that's a part of your group, thank you for coming and sharing and partaking in the celebration today. This conclude our presentation. If you would like to leave, you may do so, but please, please come back again. Thank you so very much. We appreciate you. Yes, we're up here discussing how old we all were in 67. Somebody said they thought he was on city council in 67. Not quite. Anyway, moving right along, we're gonna move to public comments. And now's the time, if you haven't already done so, to fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up.
I have no comments at this time, Mayor.
There are no comments at this time. I would also like to announce that we will have an executive session today to consider matters related to the contemplate or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Tar Frazier versus the City of Beaumont, Cause Number E-206919, Caleb Fenter versus City of Beaumont, and Christopher S. Boone, Cause Number B-210244, also the International Association of Firefighters, Local 399 versus the City of Beaumont, Kenneth R. Williams in his official capacity as city manager, and Earl White in his official capacity as fire chief, Cause Number D-210950, and Beaumont versus Netflix, Hulu, and Disney, Cause Number DC-22-09128. That was on my phone. At this time, I would like to call for a motion for the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Getz.
Well, are we gonna consider item E?
I think the city manager.
Yeah, item E, and Shereen can address that. Item E is not on the posted agenda, but I would like for item C to be pulled separately, Mayor, so we can add some clarity to council. Shereen, if you want to add.
Okay, so item E has been pulled because it was not properly posted for the full 72 hours online.
Okay, so.
So items for approval will be items A, B, D, and then C separately.
So my motion, I'll amend my motion to be a move for approval of A, B, and D.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor for items A, B, and D. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. Now, may I have a motion for item C, please?
Move to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
I just wanted to clarify that what was in our packet appeared to be a description of a city other than Beaumont, but the actual language of the House Bill 3520 proposed by Representative Christian Emanuel does have a description of the city of Beaumont as item number 46. And so, we are asking for the city of Beaumont to be included in that, and this resolution accomplishes that.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and likewise, Mayor, I would just like to mention that the resolution has been amended likewise to reflect the wording that's in the House Bill legislation. So we've corrected that, and all that information's on here in front of you on the dice.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Williams, could you maybe, for the public, explain what the significance would be to having the city of Beaumont included in this proposed legislation in the legislature?
Yeah, this legislation provides economic development incentives for the city of Beaumont, whereby we'll be able to use tax, high tax dollars, and even some sales tax dollars for the use in developing a hotel, a hotel conference center. So to be able to do that, you have to get the approval of the state legislature. So we have proposed House Bill 3250, which has been put forward by Representative Christian Emanuel. And currently, it's been filed, and we're waiting for it to go to the committee, but it's, we can't use the tax dollars for that purpose, or get that from the state of Texas. It even reimburses us the tax dollars from the state of Texas to be used to build a hotel here in Beaumont. So it's imperative that we get the legislation passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Item one, Mayor. Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number six to the contract with King Solution Services LLC for the pipe bursting work order contract Phase III project. Back in June 2020, a resolution was passed by council, which awarded the contract to King Resolution of Houston, an amount of $1,008,33508. There's been one previous change order in the amount of $85,296. This proposed change order is for $200,22112, and it's to relocate sewer lines between the Crestwood and Derwood Drive to the roadway. And if approved, this change order would result in a new contract of amount of $2,118,73208. And staff has approved, recommended approval of the resolution, and this to be funded out of the capital program.
Thank you. You heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Counsel, consider awarding $75,000 to the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce to facilitate the development of a strategic economic development plan. A few weeks ago, Chamber President Steve Alainius came before you to lay out a plan of economic development initiatives with the chamber, between the chamber and the city of Beaumont. And in that, it was a proposed initiative to do a strategic economic development strategic plan. And today, Steve's coming back to request that $75,000 from the city to the chamber to execute that plan. We have Steve in the audience, and I think with members of the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce, if you would like to hear from him.
Ms. Alainius, if you please come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I'd also like to introduce, I have several board members here, Rebecca Maxwell, who is Chair of the Board, but I'd also like the rest of the board that's here representing the chamber, if you would please stand.
Thank you for joining us.
I think this is an indication of how serious the board takes this opportunity. Obviously, you know, we're following what the city is doing with the strategic plan for redevelopment in downtown, but also the strategic plan for the city. And we feel like this is the third leg of that effort. And I think it's a great opportunity in terms of identifying what industries, new industries, we can go after in terms of diversifying the economy, what we can do to grow our local businesses, and also grow our local startups. And so, very excited about it. Obviously, you know, wanting to grow and have an outreach with a lot of different stakeholders within the community, because there's a lot of different things that people have to think, had to say and think about doing economic development. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Ms. Alainius, could you speak on, or just refresh the viewing audience on what you spoke about, some of the highlights of what you're gonna use?
Absolutely. So in doing an economic development plan, strategic economic development plan, it's critical that you tap into a lot of different parts of the community, because there's different things that are important for different, you know, elements of the community. So we envision this as a starting point, because you gotta understand what industry is to go after, who do you want to recruit for this, and then how do you diversify the economy. And so this is the starting point. This is not the end point, but this is a starting point. It brings together the thought processes, the folks that are very interested in economic development in terms of how we can develop this for this community. It's been 23 years since Beaumont's had a strategic economic development strategy. I think it's time for that. And I think in conjunction with everything else that's happening, I think timing-wise, it's a good time to do this.
Great. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. What's your timeline on having this plan completed?
Councilmember, I believe six to nine months, I think, is the typical timeframe to complete something of this magnitude.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dureo.
I noticed it says the city will provide an additional allocation of $75,000. Have they already provided an allocation, and this is in addition to that?
Yes, sir. We currently have an $85,000 contract to do the basic economic development activities for the city.
And so this is an additional.
In addition to that, yes, sir.
Any other comments? Ms. Alainius, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So all in favor, please signify by saying. The motion? I'm sorry. May I have a motion, please? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any oppose? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, consider a request for an abandonment of a portion of the south end of Winfield Drive. At a joint public hearing on June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended ADO to approve the request for abandonment of a portion of the south end of Winfield Drive with the following conditions: One, obtain approval of PZ 2022-216 for a new railroad spur; and two, if approved, applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title commitment must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on city council's agenda. And again, it was approved by PNG, and staff has recommended approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes. Counsel, consider a request for an abandonment of the north end of Amarillo Street, the neighboring alleyway in Block 32, Cartwright Terrace, and an adjoining portion of Forsite Street. And again, in a joint public hearing held on June 22, 2022, the planning commission recommended ADO to approve the request with the following conditions: obtain approval of PZ 2022-216 for a railroad spur. If abandoned, applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Recommended approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Received comments on authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with Texas NM Transportation Institute, submit a grant application, and execute a contract with the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, to receive funds for the zip. This is for dollars for the replacement of five buses for the zip project.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
I don't have any, Mayor.
Okay, there's no one that's gonna speak on the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing.
Mayor, wouldn't this item number five?
No.
No. No, it's totally.
It's just a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing. I'm sorry. Okay. So I will close the public hearing at this time.
Yes, Mayor. Counsel, conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter an interlocal agreement with the Texas NM Transportation Institute, submit a grant application, and execute a contract with the Federal Transit Administration to achieve funds for the zip. Again, I mentioned that this is to replace five buses of 2003, 2008, and two 2016 buses. We do have a change of those. We do have a change of those figures that are in your packet and you might have that before you too. The five buses at first, the dollar amount was approximately $3,100,000, but that's changed to $3,318,480.
Could you repeat that again, $3 million? Okay.
And we've got recently the FTA issued a low emission grant for the buses and we had a notice of funding opportunity, so the NOFA noticed a funding opportunity, it's a chance for the city of Beaumont to secure up to 85% funding covered for the FTA. So, that amount is represented up to $2,820,708. That changes from the $2,635,000 in the original packet because those numbers came back differently. So, we're recommending approval of the funding.
Thank you. You've heard the reading. May I have a motion, please?
So, move for approval.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protim Duria.
With the change at the total, the city's contribution stays the same?
Yes, good point, Counselmember. The city's contribution will remain $7,500.
Any other discussion? Our comment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Okay. Let's get that. Second, Mayor.
That concludes the attention.
Yes, that was five.
That was five.
Mine is separate. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's another public hearing?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah, that's, that one goes away.
Now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room and Mr. Boone.
Sorry, one clarification. So, we just had the public hearing and the action item on the transit funds. The next is to receive public comments, no action item, on the 2023 Annual Action Plan. And that's the final, that's going to be the final item in your packet. And again, it's just to take comments, there's no action.
Okay, no action. So, do we have anyone that wanted to speak?
I don't at this time.
Let's see.
Unless Mr. Krab. No, he's public comments, Mayor.
Okay, there's no comment. Thank you, Mr. Boone. Okay, now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. Your three minutes will begin when the green light comes on and the red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up. City clerk?
Sam Marshawn, 4375 Thomas Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel.
Thank you.
I'm here to update you on the activities of the Beaumont Youth Advisory Council. This Saturday, we'll be taking a group to the National League of Cities Annual Congressional Conference, sorry if you can't hear me, in Washington DC. We are actively organizing a beautification day in the near future for the city's youth. That's going to include mostly trash pickups near the schools and I think there's going to be chalk art for the young kids. As always, we remain extraordinarily grateful for your support. Our next meeting will be this coming Thursday, March 23rd, and as always, you and the members of the public are welcome to attend. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Marshawn. We appreciate your report and look forward to your big trip in Washington DC for National League of Cities with all of the youth across the United States. Thank you.
Charlie Krab, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel, and city manager and department heads. It's another nice day in Beaumont, a little windy. I guess March winds bring April showers. I'm not prepared to identify any streets needing repair today. Mr. Bar, Barkowski? Bar? Barkowski? Okay, I'm going to rehearse that. He did meet with me after the meeting last week and explained the city's reasoning for resurfacing the neighborhood asphalt streets. I want to mention a neighborhood problem with stray animals. The attack to the pit bulls the other day was a real concern. I hope animal control is on top of that dangerous situation. I pray the gentleman's recovery is fully. But I want to mention stray cats. A while back, the city was encouraged to adopt neuter and spade program for stray cats. After the procedure, the cats are released back into their neighborhood. The cats now are free to roam, looking for food and leaving their waste in flower beds, children's sandboxes, among other spots. The cats are preying on wild birds. I believe Beaumont is a bird sanctuary city. Myself and other friends feed the birds on backyard patios. They are, the birds are easy prey for the stray cats. Stray cats have been observed eating birds. The last two weeks of April is the time of birds' spring migration from Central America. People from all over the country and the world come to Highland, Cattell Marsh, and other east Texas locations just to see and identify the birds in one location. Most of these birds nest and raise their young in other locations of the US and Canada. The solution for stray cat is to eliminate them from the neighborhoods. To some, it may be inhumane, but it needs to be taken as stray cats appear to be taken care of as stray cats appear at animal control. Birds are very important to our environment by controlling the insects and other rodents as well. Thanks everyone for your service to the city of Beaumont. Thanks for your time and attention this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Krab.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to do council member comment. I think I see a green slip in Ms. Addy's hand.
When you're elderly, it takes some time. So, if you're smiling now, just wait till you get there. Good afternoon. I'm here, and you know, I go over and over with issues. And one of the things is, I had a company for sirens to send me some information and I know that the city manager said that he would look into it. Is that right, Mr. City Manager? You may not be able to answer me, but it looks like a turnkey situation for a siren where it could be helped, it could be heard throughout. Jefferson County would be $35,000, complete and installed, turnkey. So, you know, I keep coming and I will because, you know, we're having very unusual weather and to save one life would be really important. But more than that, it's an obligation to our city to make sure that we're safe and I have this information. So, if staff has not had the time to look this up, I have, and I'd be glad to share it. The other thing is, I know, I looked at the packet, it said $75,000 was going to our chamber and that's great. But how can the city dig deep and find money to do sidewalks? I don't know if it's $75,000 or more, but I'm just, I'm just at awe. We have children that are walking in the street for years and we haven't addressed it. Can we please? Because that is in the ordinance and I will continue to stand here. Now, I know economic development is important and I know that the Chamber of Commerce is our business consortium for our city, but I know that we have a strategic plan. We're looking at growing Beaumont. Start with our people. And $1.99, I'm still trying to put my head around it to pay you for water bill. Now, I know convenience funds are used with all kinds of corporations. We pay taxes. Why do we, after you've had an 8% increase for this last budget for our water bill, that now, before six-month review of the budget, that we have to pay $1.99? It makes a difference in my pockets. I don't know about other people. And I thank you for considering anything that I say. I thank you for waiting for me until I got up and I love you all. Don't think I'm a fussy old lady. I just want you to hear from a citizen and I'm that. Thank you. Have a good day.
Ms. Addy, if you pass that information to the clerk, she'll make sure that the city manager gets it and share it with us. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Now's the time for council member comments and I will start with you, Mayor Protim Duria.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, congratulations to the top lady of distinctions, the pink ladies. Congratulations on your proclamation. Youth Council, have fun in DC. We will be there and we will be watching you. But on that youth council, I mean, it's, how long have they been in existence? Maybe less than six months? And they're doing a lot and they're already, they've been on one trip, now they're getting ready to go to DC. So, very proud of Councilman Turner and Councilman Samuel for getting that kicked off and it's already shown to be a success. Also, on animal control, the dog attack at Sprott Park, the one dog was put down by the police. The other dog has been found and as far as I know, it's in the custody of the animal control and that's unfortunate incident and we got to do something about. You know, I tell folks though, you have to report it. I'm glad some folks did report it because if we don't know about it, not much we can do about it. They are out there looking. I get calls on dogs every day and called 311 or I'll call the city manager and they'll send someone out there, but they'll run hide. It's just, it's just hard to keep up with. And I'm going to say this for the last time, last Thursday, we did have official opening of the bridge on Fennet Road. We had a ribbon cutting. I've drove across it two or three times a day since then. It's a lot, it's very convenient. I haven't been on Interstate 10 since that bridge opened. So, thank you. Tech dot, now it's on to the next project, which is I-10, which is going to take a long time. But it's good that we got that bridge open because that could be a detour for I-10. So, just get ready. I-10 is going to take a while, but they keep telling us that progress takes time. So, we just ask for your patience and to pay attention to the road signs and the construction that's going on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Getz?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Allen, it's important that citizens understand that it's only when you use your credit card and to pay your water bill that you're going to incur that $1.99. I think that's the case in most cases, but if you want to continue to pay by check, by cash, or have it automatically debited from your checking account, you can set that up and you won't have the occurrence of $1.99. I asked about that myself, so it's not across the board that you have to incur that convenience fee. The other thing I want to talk about is the shooting that occurred outside a lounge in the west end last Friday night. One of the problems that leads to, led to this and other incidents in Beaumont is there seems to be various establishments that serve alcohol and don't cut it off at 2:00. Don't know if that was exactly the case here, but I do know that there were hundreds of people still outside that facility after 2:00. And of course, we know what happened as a result of that. I have asked and been in communication with Dave Phelan, the Speaker of the House, to get him to encourage us to have more of a TABC presence in Beaumont. TABC moved their offices out of Beaumont some time back. You have to request an agent to come out of Houston, but I do believe that we need to have our local bars and taverns inspected more regularly and I think it would help facilitate that and he agrees with that. So, we're going to see about trying to get some TABC presence back in Beaumont. I think that'll help the situation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. State Fair Thursday, the 23rd, 5:30 ribbon cutting. Come out and support our state fair and rodeo and remember, everyone that's there at 5:30 on Thursday for the ribbon cutting, you get in for free. So, looking forward to this year's state fair. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Samuel. Counselmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just remind everybody, we have the Beaumont Municipal Fly-In. It's a family-friendly event out there at the Beaumont Municipal Airport this weekend, I think it's Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. And as always, Ms. Allen, I would love to take you flying.
City manager, please.
Just to comment, just for Ms. Allen, I have directed staff to start looking into the siren deal. So, we are addressing, addressing it to look at it. And two, I'd like to thank the BISD for contributing to the travel expense for most of our youth council. They are paying for, I think the city's only, we have a budget for youth council and we're paying for two, maybe three, two, and the other eight, how many is it? Oh, the 11 that BISD is paying for their expenses to go to the NFC. So, we'd like to thank them for their participation.
Thank you. Ms. Reed? Thank you. Mr. Boone? Mr. Ellis? Mr. Barkoviac? Mrs. Semino? And Mrs. Bruce, sorry? Thank you. So, it's on me. I would like to say, again, it's Southeast Texas State Fair time. It's a tradition, please go out Thursday, as he said, the gates open. Ribbon cutting is at 5:30 and following ribbon cutting, the gates will open. So, please go out and support the YMBL State Fair. Also, in reference to the incident at Sprott Park, unfortunately, those dogs got a loose. Owners are always responsible for their pets, especially when it's a pet that has the potential of injuring or harming. of injuring or harming a citizen. And there's continued prayer for that citizen, and hopefully that he's in the recovery stage. That incident could have been a lot worse if school was in, had it not been spring break, because the children usually are crossing and are in that park, headed to their different destinations, or either waiting for their parents to be picked up. And so I would just like to say, thank God that it wasn't, as bad as it was, it could have been a lot worse, because there were two dogs. And so the owner has been notified. Animal Control has taken great steps to speak with the owner of the dog and to ensure the safety of the community, because I also got several calls, and there were calls made to the office asking to speak with me in reference to that. And so that's why I wanted to make sure that I made a public announcement in reference to it. Also, the incident on Friday night with the shooting, I have spoken to the owner of the property of St. Charles Plaza. As a matter of fact, the own, one of the owners called me, and he's even out of the country, and so he said upon his arrival, that is something that he will be looking into, addressing different issues and concerns, because of course, they want to make sure that the city is safe, the community is safe. And there are restaurants that serve alcohol, and so unfortunately, for business owners that serve alcohol, our businesses that are strictly a bar or serve any type of alcoholic beverage, there's a lot of times, things are going to get out of control. But we have to stay within the guidelines of the law, and the city permits, procedures, and anything outside of that, then owners will have to abide by the law of the city. And so there are a lot of things that have been brought up since this incident, and unfortunately, to the family, I would like to send condolences to that family for the incident that did happen. And it's something that I think we all can look at. As Councilmember Getz said, we don't have Alcohol ATF Office here, but surely they are under the guidelines of the ATF Office, and so those things are being looked at. Also, anytime anything happens, like the dog attack, of course, please call three-one-one immediately. Three-one-one will answer any call and can get any emergency vehicle to any incident. And so please utilize three-one-one. It's a great tool if you just use it. In addition to that, again, excited about the ribbon cutting, Mayor Protim. I'm excited about it also, because it is a shortcut, and it opened just in time for the fair to alleviate some of the traffic that will be on I-ten throughout the next days, and opening and closing of the fair. So just be prepared to make sure that you leave in time to get there. And so I'm sure Fennet Road will be the alternate detour for I-ten, so just get ready and be prepared and be patient, and be aware of a lot of traffic. And so we're looking forward to all of that, and to the top ladies of distinction, just want to congratulate them and thank them for the continued work that they do. And to our youth, again, we look forward to seeing you at the youth conference, excited about the different workshops that you'll be able to sit in on, and hopefully, I could break away to attend at least one with the youth conference. So exciting things are happening in Beaumont. We want to thank you for coming today. We have a full executive session, so thank you for coming out, and go out, spread the love, and we will recess to executive session. Thank you.